If we'll give her a couple more minutes.
We're still waiting for Mayor Pro Tem Cho to jump on the Zoom. So give us just a couple of minutes to make sure she comes on. Thank you for your patience.
Rena, are you right there?
Yes, I'm here.
Good morning. Will you will you be outlining the prioritizing process?
Yeah, so what we, I think what our intent is, Tracy, jump in if I'm incorrect on this. Tracy is going to share her screen and that will be the PowerPoint process. But we'll just share it on the screen and you can go in in depth, both you and Teresa through the process.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm actually looking for probably Teresa to do the piece about the prioritizing. That's perfect. Thank you.
Rena, just for clarification, are you able to share your screen? Because I'll be doing a lot of editing and jumping between screens. If you're able to show the PowerPoint, you'll have more control over what piece you're all looking at at the same time. I have to jump between the survey and the PowerPoint. So if you could help me out with that, that would be great.
Yeah, it's not a problem. I will pull that up and give me like 10 seconds and I'll pull that up.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tracy. Great. This whole technology is learning something new every time, and it does all kinds of stuff. And then it and then it does something weird. But boy, how lucky we are to have it during this period of time. Great, great.
So I think, Mayor, we're ready to start. And just for clarification purposes, I'm going to have this already shared. But we do have to call the meeting to order and we have to receive oral communication and that one housekeeping regular business item.
Got it. Okay. With that, we will call the Selma City Council Special Meeting to Order, March 19th, 2021, at 9:32 a.m. On March 17th, 2020, Governor Newsom issued Executive Order N 2920, which allows a local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative bodies. The teleconference phone number, if you wish to participate, is 1301-715-8592. The ID is 872-9121-7402 with the password of 2021. When on the phone, if you wish to address council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise hand, and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Here.
Mayor Robertson.
Here. Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member has a potential conflict of interest may announce the item now and recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Oral communications during public comments, if you wish to address the city council under Government Code 54954.3A, you may only address the city council concerning any item that has been described in the notice for the special meeting. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. City Clerk, do we have any oral communications at this time?
Mayor Robertson, at this time, I do see we have two callers on the line. As a reminder to the callers that we have on the line, if you'd like to address the city council regarding any items on the agenda, please use star nine to raise your hand, and you will be selected from the meeting queue. There's no one raising their virtual hand at this time, Mayor Robertson.
Thank you. Under regular business, consideration of requests from California Water Service for support regarding equitable distribution of federal COVID-19 financial assistance for customers of PUC-regulated water suppliers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council Cal Water. Would like the city to sign on a coalition letter that it will be sending out in order to for relief funding that will be coming through to utilities. They would like to ensure that utilities that are regulated by the PUC are included in those relief efforts. So they've asked that we send that we sign on to a letter of support. We distributed the draft letter to you all, and it's attached to the staff report. Also on the line, we have representatives of Cal Water. If you have any questions, they did want to get this coalition letter out this week. So that's what's before.
Do we have any comment from our Cal Water representatives? They would like to make it this time?
This is Kevin McCusker, California Water Service. Thank you, Mayor Robertson and council members. We have gotten a lot of local elected officials and cities participating. As you know, we serve a variety of communities, all the way down to Palos Verdes Peninsula in the south, up to Chico in the north. And many parties are joining, either sending their own letters or lending their names to the joint letter. And in our mind, it's really just a fairness and an equity issue for our customers that we're trying to advocate on their behalf. Just to summarize, HR 133, which was passed by Congress in back in December, included $638 million nationwide for the establishment of a new low-income household drinking water and wastewater emergency assistance program. After that, HR 1319, known as the American Rescue Plan Act, was more recently signed by the President just earlier this month. That is almost, you know, $2 trillion in economic stimulus. But most importantly, to note that that provides an additional $500 million nationwide, again, for that low-income household drinking water and wastewater emergency assistance program. It also provides another $30 billion nationwide to help renters and homeowners. And in part, that money can be used by renters and homeowners to pay other bills and arrears. So that money was included in that federal legislation. The language within the federal legislation itself uses the term public water system, which has a very specific meaning under federal language and does include both governmental and non-governmental water utilities. And as such, we just want to ensure that the state provides our customers access to that assistance if they if they need it.
Thanks for that summary. So if I'm understanding correctly, that Cal Water is just saying it should be a recipient of the funds like any other city, given that there is a significant number of the cities you serve of folks who haven't been able to pay their bills due to the financial impact of COVID-19. And maybe looking down the road, if Cal Water would not be able to be a recipient of these funds, it could impact ratepayers in the future. Is that correct? It could lead to higher rates for all of us.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does council have any comment on this at this time?
I have a question. So and I think you already clarified it, but I just want to make sure that I have it right in my clarification. There is a the funding right now for the emergency utility allowance, which is the $600, right? This is in addition to that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, perfect. That's I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Do we have any callers on the line who would like to weigh in on this matter?
I do see we have one caller on the line. Caller, as a reminder, please use star nine to raise your hand. Hands raised at this time.
With that, I'll bring it back to council. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Guerra.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes. With that, we will move on to the City Council Goal Setting Session, the City Council Discussion Regarding Council Goals and Priorities Facilitated by Dr. Jacqueline Ryle, Ph.D. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor. Thank you so much. I'll say with your permission, I'll do a little preliminary statement and then and then we'll explain how the process is going to go forward. I just want to thank you for the honor and privilege of being here. You know, I served as city clerk with the city of Fresno for for 28 years and have worked with many communities and with your community since about 2008 and with the council for about the last six years. And I want to say, working with many, it's particularly a privilege here because through the years, your your city council has worked so well together and has been continued to do what needs to be done in a most efficient and effective way, even through the pandemic. So thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. Thank you.
Dr. Ryle, thank you for coming. Under these unique circumstances, we look forward to establishing our goals and objectives today. And thank you for your help with this. Let's kick this off.
Great, thank you. All right, you can see that we're going to work together here, which I really do appreciate. I thanks so much to Teresa, Rena and Tracy, who are really a pleasure to work with. And and you can see we're starting out by showing the slides. And what we'll be doing is is we'll having input on goals and priorities. The council will take a survey on top five goals where the council members set priority. And we'll have a short break to create that. And then we'll list the goals in each priority area. And 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 there will be input and assistance on being able to post in chat, email, call or text to one of the coordinators. And then you'll see the slide that will talk about brainstorming for miscellaneous items that might be unrelated or that need attention later on. So taking into account, as you said, you know, this unique set of circumstances, but the the opportunity to participate, it goes across the board. So good, then thanks so much for Teresa, Rena and Tracy for developing this process, this really workable process. All right, you can see the agenda introductions with answers, and I know you all received this in advance. So you've had a chance to think about this a little bit, summarizing the priorities and goals. And there are some timelines around this, the status and update on the priorities and goals, and then getting feedback. And then we'll we'll do a summary and close. And so for the opening, for for this period of time, this has been quite an interesting set of not only setbacks in some ways, but opportunities in in some ways. So if each of you and perhaps Mayor, you will or Rena, just call members by name. And each one of you then will introduce yourself in terms of how you see the ideal, what you consider the ideal future of Selma. And what do you see the greatest opportunity that has been presented during this pandemic? I, as you see me looking down, although it's being recorded, I'm also making some notes. And I will, as I have in the past, provide you with a report. And then staff helps to then translate that into workable documents as you go forward in your planning process. So if we may start, Mayor, perhaps you would call the members. And if you would like to start, that'd be wonderful.
Sure, we can start with Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
So at this point, I think what we're asking is for council member, for each council member at this time, and we'll start with Mendoza Navarro to introduce yourself and your role in the community. And are we also going to ask them to answer the question at this time as well?
Please, all three, please. Yes.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Hi, good morning, everyone. And welcome, Dr. Riley.
Ryle, thank you.
Ryle, thank you. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
And so my name is Blanca Mendoza Navarro, and I've been a resident of Selma for over 40 years. My family immigrated here when I was two. And so, you know, we made Selma our home. We haven't been anywhere else. My background includes retail manufacturing. I worked in the Valley Farms, you know, when I was younger. And now I'm in housing. And I'm a quality assurance analyst for the Fresno Housing Authority, which really includes writing policies and procedures and making sure we're in compliance with, you know, all the different laws and all the different funding sources that we that we handle. Or we, you know, the funding sources that we apply for. And I have an associate in paralegal studies. And, you know, I've always wanted to, I aspire to be an attorney. It's just things have always, you know, life happens. And so it's just kind of been pushed back a little bit. And the what is my ideal future? Oh, let me go back. And personally, I have three children and two grandbabies. So I'm a grandma, I'm a mom. And I have like 12 godchildren. So I'm I'm a very proud mom and grandma and godmother. What is my ideal future for Selma? It's I want to see us grow, you know, as a as a business, as a I mean, we're a business, and so we want to be able to attract more businesses and retain them. And, you know, have have enough housing because, you know, as a mom, my kids now have babies. And so I would like for them to live here. You know, we, when we first were looking for our home, we looked in Fresno, we looked in the surrounding areas, but it was just not home. And so I want my kids to feel the same way and be able to have something, you know, for them to to call home. And, you know, Selma is a really good place to be. I want to, you know, again, I want to increase our businesses, our housing, our school, our community. And we have, you know, great staff. I want to, you know, help them to to, you know, continue growth. And I want to, you know, have our vision, you know, I have a vision of making Selma great and, you know, to continue that vision. Not just when I'm here, you know, I want to be able to set something that in, you know, whenever I decide not to run again, that I could say, oh, I started that process and, you know, be be proud of, I was part of that. And the greatest opportunity that has presented itself during the pandemic. There is a couple of things. Personally, I am just, it's it's helped me to slow down because I was always on the go, 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 go. And it really forced me to sit down and and really appreciate the things that are important to me, right? So my family's always been important. My kids have always been important, but it was always, I was thinking I was doing better for them by always doing and going, going. But they needed me. They needed me physically. And so that was a big thing. The other thing was I became a grandma for the second time. And then, but I let me think. Sorry, I wrote a couple of things down. Oh, I had really seriously, you know, as I mentioned before, I really aspire to be an attorney. And so I had really seriously thought about it right before the pandemic. I started to attend the the forums. You know, my husband and I were talking and and, you know, I was actually going to start attending San Joaquin College of Law. And, you know, started all the forums and out studied, started studying for the ALSTATs. And then the pandemic happened. And so everything just cut, got pushed and pushed and pushed, right? So then it was placed back in my heart that I needed to do something for my community. And what I needed to do was run for office. And so it was confirmed that I needed to run for office. And so I did. And so I won. And I won a few times, just, you know, just to put it out there, I won a few times. So I'm really excited to, you know, be part of this leadership team and really help our team grow, our city grow. And, you know, put us on the map because we are the center point of California. And, you know, you look everywhere around us and you have the mountains, you know, to the east, you know, to the west. Sorry, I'm bad with my directions. One way you have mountains, one way you have ocean, you have, you know, San Francisco and you have LA. So I just really want to put us, put us out there and have us flourish.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. Nice start. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Trujillo.
Okay. First of all, welcome, Dr. Riley. Thank you for all the input you've been doing for the last two years that I've been here.
Thank you.
First of all, just a little brief summary of what I've, where I'm from, what I'm doing. Married 21 years. Moved to Selma in 2000. Owner of Max's Brunch House Cafe, owner of John Trujillo Incorporated. I've employed probably about 26 people, been doing that since 2004. Business have been thriving. Worked for Builders Concrete, Biking Redemix, National Cement, one of the one of the salesmen for the surrounding areas. Been there for 20 years. Been working around the whole valley for construction. So we do major constructions, been involved in that. So in regards to what my role is in the community, I consider myself a leader. And I've been, I consider myself a leader to this community. I consider myself very important asset in regards to future development with the youth in regards to handing them the tools to become a leader for this in community. Because in order for us to inspire and build people and build this community, we have to introduce a new culture, a new thought process and to bring into this community. My role as a leader is to help the community development by by making important decisions that will benefit our community, have the foresight for our future, for the future development of our community. If we don't have the future, if you don't look at the future and invest in our future and think and have the foresight to make the decisions right now that will not benefit our accolades for these years that we're in office. But in the future, make the tools and implant the information and do the decisions now that in the future will instill our community. That's where we're going to get our growth. Encourage encourage fair treatment of people in our community. But most important, develop, develop partnerships that will benefit the entire community. That's my role in this community because at the end of the day, I represent the seal of Selma. I don't represent my personal feelings. I have businesses that, you know, would inspire for me to be, I guess you could say, biased to, you know, go those, but I have to actually look at the seal of Selma, represent the seal of Selma. That's what that's what I envision. I mean, that's what my community rolling is. What's what's the ideal future of Selma? Well, I will be a little bit more leaning on that. Increase downtown commerce, meaning I can see a lot more people in the community of Selma walking around, making it more commerce friendly. Increase down, increase lots of activity in our parks. We're working on a park right now that I I vision would actually wrap around the communities that would make the communities from our surrounding areas come to our community that would enhance our downtown commerce. Make one of my biggest thoughts and when I did became a city council member in Selma was I envisioned the two-mile stretch of 99 to be developed, either through commerce or industrial parks. That would be my future, ideal future for Selma. What is the greatest opportunity has presented itself during the pandemic? I believe when you take a pandemic or a downturn or down a downturn of development pandemic, I believe there are opportunities. And one of the main opportunities would be we've learned that the families have grown more value to being together and working together and finding things that are naturally created that would make our families work together, which again goes back to our downtown development. What can we do for the downtown, bringing the community together? The signing of the $1.9 trillion COVID relief bill state has given, and I'm going back to everything what I said as a leader. We have an opportunity right now where the federal government signed this relief bill of 350 that will be giving to the states $350 billion. We have the ability to capture some of that money and create our infrastructure. One of the most important things, and I'll go back to my, what is my role as a leader? We have to have the insight to see what the future holds for Selma. The past 10, 15 years, we've needed infrastructure, infrastructure. That's what's kept us. So at the end, I'd like to just say this, we have our greatest opportunity with the pandemic is the opportunity to install and create our infrastructure.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Trujillo. Thank you. All right, next.
Thank you. Councilmember Guerra.
Okay, I've been a council member. I'm Sarah Guerra. I'm a council member for the past three years now. Born and raised in Selma, the businesswoman. We've now been in business in the city of Selma, which is Robertson Garrett Insurance Agency. We are celebrating our 20 years this year. Also, I've been a community leader and a community mentor, I would say, for our youth. I've been very involved with our schools, especially with our scholarship programs. We've had our kids that come back to us and thank us. And they tell us, you know, what they majored in, they've accomplished, and they they look to come back to Selma and be one of our leaders here in the future. So that's really means a great deal to me because I like to see people strive, and that's my goal. Also, being a part of a, I would say, one of the best medical providers that has really helped us here in Selma, getting the COVID and the administering the shots here is United Health Centers. And one thing I'm very proud of is sitting on their board and helping to coordinate all these what we call drive-throughs so that people can get vaccinated and we can get back to being a normal or some normalcy type of life. The other thing I would like to share is, you know, here, what we're talking about is what are the gravitas opportunities that have presented during this pandemic? Is working together, is is seeing that we have a vision that we want to help people, especially these small businesses that were suffering. You know, that's what it's about, is coming together and stating that, you know, there's a problem, there's an issue. And with our staff, you know, we came together and said, hey, we need to help these businesses out. So I applaud my staff or the staff of Selma because hearing other council and what they had to go through was unreal. I applaud you guys for not having to do any layoffs. You know, we didn't have those issues here. And keeping our businesses, our downtown businesses that were struggling, that came to us and said, thank you. You know, thank you for helping me. It helped out. You know, those are things that we want to hear and we want to continue. The other thing is, what is what is your ideal future in Selma? Well, we've talked about infrastructure. We know that that is a big issue. And then also, we got to look at, you know, sufficient shopping here in Selma. You know, we we lost a shopping mall several years ago, and this is before any of, well, some of, I would say, most of your time, even mine. But being involved in the community, I did attend meetings when in, and this was a shopping center that was supposed to be here. But we lost it to Hanford. We have to look at these attractions and bring them back. Because we want our citizens to be able to shop in Selma. We don't want them going to Visalia or Fresno, Hanford. You know, that's what they tell us. We lost these big boxes stores like Target. We need to bring those back. We need to bring back the Costcos. Costco's been wanting to come to Selma for quite a while. The Smart and Finals been trying to come to Selma. You know, we got to attract these businesses. And how are we going to do that? Maybe by incentivizing them, you know, these are things that we need to become creative. Let me see my notes. I think, and then again, we, you know, we talked about there's, we're going to need a new fire station. We need new housing development. These are things that that are going to come. Once one starts, we're going to get this stuff, you know, just like they say, you got a Ross, well, guess what comes after that, a Marshals? You know, we just, we're going to get there. We just got to get that. Like we said, we talked about the infrastructure. Other than that, I mean, I think we're on the on a great track. I mean, from looking what we were at three years ago and to now, I think we've done a great improvement, you know, it's it's, in fact, I looked at the goal. I think we've done a great improvement, you know, it, it's, it's, in fact, I looked at the goals that I, that we set. And I can mark that there's at least five goals that were on my, my list that were, were accomplished. So I'm really proud, I'm very proud of the community, I'm proud of the staff and, you know, we just got to keep moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Gara, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Beverly Cho, my family came to Selma nineteen sixty-three, established Cho's Kitchen. Right now, we're, we are, I was gone for a few years for college, but I've been back in the area since nineteen eighties. So I, I'm considered a pretty, you know, well, Selma person too. My son and I are the third, my son is the third generation, we are serving third and fourth generations of the Central Valley people. I have two sons, one decided to stay, one decide, he left. He decided, you know, restaurant is not his thing, so he decided to go to college and he's, he's a tech, ITech person now. I'm involved in many organization in the city, these are, includes Lions Club, Chamber of Commerce, Quanas. Selma Women, Selma Care, I've been committed to this community for all these years. Besides, I've never been in the politic world and this is what came about this year. I like to mix the different groups together because they're all different and then come back up and we have a common goal at the end. And with these organizations, I'm used to serving and helping where it is needed, so that is basically has always been me. Everybody knows where I am, you know, they know where, they can find me easily, I'm at the restaurant, so it's pretty. Since this pandemic, I went back to work more because it makes the, I think our local people feel good that at least, you know. We're still standstill, even through all this, we're still, you know, we can hold out, okay? As a councilperson, I hope to be able to do it at another scale, like I said, I could be, reach easily, you know, where I work. And no problem is too little or too big, you just have to do it one step at a time. My ideal future for Selma, I just like to see Selma prosperous in all the areas that. You know, economic, safety and all the community aspect. I think, you know, our job is, is going to be a good one in front of us, hard one even. I like to see those people of Selma, be proud of Selma again, so, so we do have a, a good job ahead of us, so. And also hopefully our, my ideal future also that we all work together in peace. And the opportunity presented by pandemic, okay, I see that. What it did is it drew all the people and the agencies together. And they, you know, that really helped because they were able to figure out what was needed and was able to go out and let. Let them all know how to get through it, through grants for the small businesses, delivery for the seniors. And now COVID vaccine for all, so everything is going, you know, they're working really hard to do and this. It was a long haul, you know, you could almost, almost see the light at the end. Everybody working so hard and I commend our city staff for, for doing all the, you know, good job. And that's, you know, to me, that is what, it, it did pull everybody together also. You know, like, this is like I say, we didn't, you know, go out negative, so to me it was a. Not a great thing, but I see, I think, I see the unity starting and that's, I think it will be a good future for Selma.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp Show, thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you, my name's Scott Robertson, I'm the mayor of Selma. And, you know, I really have had some practice in going over goals and objectives for Selma. Running for the mayor in the last election, it's really what I ran on and I was very happy. And very in tune with the citizens, the majority of whom elected me as their first elected mayor. On the platform of public safety, economic opportunity and community outreach, which we're talking about today. I am here to make Selma a better, more livable, safer place. That is bottom line, that's why I'm here, I'm going, I've been on the council going on nine years. And I've seen our city hire more people, I've seen our. General fund prosper and grow, which continue, which is continuing that trend. And so today, the events like this are significant in my opinion because the council is here to set. A strategic direction, an overall direction, the staff does an incredible job, they do really well. And it's getting more and more tight knit with some really great additions. And we're moving forward on that, but with the council, we, we need days like this. Where we come up with a strategic direction for the city, there have been several decisions in the past just couple of months. Where, you know, the council's had an opportunity to either make a short-term decision. Or to make that decision and put it in the context of the larger future of Selma. And I think we, you know, the, a couple of, there are a couple of new council members, I welcome them and want to work with them. And to, to make sure that we are making decisions that do serve Selma for the long run. Some of the decisions in COVID have been pretty short-term. Because there have been people, there have been businesses that have been hurting economically, especially in the service sector and the, in the restaurant sector. It's just been shut down in the theater. It, it's been a horrible time economically and it's been the city's role to help them find a way. And thanks to our city manager and our economic analyst Tracy Toesten, our finance director, Isaac Moreno, Assistant City Manager. Mike Kirchner, providing senior meals, the city has stepped up. And so, I'll take that second one first, the greatest opportunity that's been presented during this pandemic, it has been for the city to step up. And show what it can do, it's highlighted the importance of public safety. Our police chief has been front and center, our fire chief has been our emergency director and has done an incredible job again. Coordinating efforts in Selma always keeps us up to date on. COVID health requirements and whether we're going from purple to red, which we hope will be next Tuesday. But it has shown the quality of our staff in Selma to rise to the challenge. I know we've been coming in, Councilmember Gara and I, to these meetings since this, we were kind of shut down a year ago and we started coming back. And the, the level of commitment is, should really make the citizens feel secure. That the, the city is there for the citizens, especially during times like this. Selma's healthcare partners have really shown themselves, especially United Healthcare and Adventist. And it is, it's shown how important it is for cities and the city's partners to work together during an issue like this. So just to back up, where I came from, I, I've only been coming here since nineteen ninety-three, so I guess I'm a little new. When I met my wife Rosa Gallardo, she was born and raised here in Selma, went to school here. And we moved back here and opened a business in two thousand and four, bought the old JCPenney building. In partnership with Sarah and Mondo Gara. And we've been here ever since with the business and the reason I got on council was to, to make a difference and again. To help business and to make our city more livable and to play a role in the future direction of our city. I am involved in several nonprofits, I was a founder, a founder of the Second Chance Animal Shelter. I'm, Rose and I are godparents to many, many of our nephews and nieces. And Rose and I have been parents to many cats and dogs over the years. At the shelter, I'm proud to say, which is a nice public-private partnership, over seven thousand. Seven thousand dogs and cats have been saved from lives of misery by going through the shelter since two thousand and fourteen. And that is through the community coming together and saying, let's solve this problem. And that's really what I'm here doing, I'm not a politician, I'm here to represent the citizens. I'm here to represent their platform today of economic development and public safety and community outreach. And that's what it's all about, and I think that's why this is such an important step. My ideal Selma, it, it attracts people and businesses to locate. It, it provides opportunities economically and for quality of life. Such as entertainment, dining, for residents, opportunities to volunteer for nonprofit organizations. To give back either through their many faith-based organizations, of which we have many proudly in Selma. I think the ideal Selma is composed of people of all ethnicities and backgrounds with different opinions. Who can find an outlet for their opinions and their talents and their activities through the many opportunities that Selma offers. We've already heard earlier, in, in some of the talks from the earlier council members of the importance of downtown. That is what makes Selma uniquely Selma and it is on the move right now to. Expand and improve and to bring people downtown. We also have a park coming into Selma, very important to keep working for that. And I think we still, we need to make sure that when we go through budget and, and our direction. That we, we align our priorities with what the people have told us, you know, they want safe streets. They want safety because no one's going to go outside, no one's going to go shopping, no one's going to come to Selma unless they feel safe here. And that's why we need to make public safety our, our top priority and continue to make that along with our public works. And our parks and community services and our planning so that we can put more housing in Selma and to attract people and to do it responsibly. Finally, I think we need to all work together on these boards. We all have a little slice of Selma, you know, the, the school district, the, the city council, the cemetery district, the healthcare district. I'm really hopeful that we can coordinate our efforts in the future again to make our city more livable and to make it a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, so, so as we've heard all of what you've said about the ideal for your community. And about the opportunities that you've experienced, there've been some, there've been some real threads and some trends that I just want to comment on. And as you've all said this, you really have reflected what I said earlier about a community that comes together and works together. So you know what I heard in terms of ideal, it is a livable community. That, you know, has, has interest in and support for your infrastructure, your small business. The opportunities for citizens to be involved and, and that is your ideal as well. This is a community that comes together and works together, I heard that through all of your comments. This process that you're in right now is so important because, and, and not all communities do this. It's an ongoing process, you don't come together once in a while and say, you know, let's have some goals. You've made this an ongoing process where you established some ideas in the beginning and you have built upon that. Every time you come together and what I'm hearing from you all, saying it one way or another. Is that your interest is in legacy for your citizens, for your community and for your future. And I surely do thank you for that, and so that's what today continues to be about. So, and when I write up these notes, I will also do that summary, which you can see in here. And you know, council members, we have different ways of going about things and so that creates a dialogue. And after that dialogue, you pull back together and do what needs to be done for your community, so thank you for that. So let us continue with the process, let's get, thank you, so the previous, and so Theresa, do you want to do a quick overview here?
Certainly, thank you, Dr. Rao.
Thank you.
So this is the priority areas and the goals that were selected from our workshop in two thousand and nineteen. And as you can see, there were six priority areas, public safety, economic development, community development, community, culture, environment, who we are. City as an entity, customer service, community engagement and communications. We had the council vote on the top two of those and public safety and economic development rose to the top. Getting four votes each, so we really focused in on those and then created goal areas within there. There were many more goals than are on the board, we then voted for the top five goals that allowed us to really focus in on areas of the most important. To the council and as you meant, as has been mentioned, we use this to guide our budget process. So we bring you a draft budget that reflects the city council's priorities and goals. Then last year, if we could go to the next slide and then I'll bounce back to this one. Last year, we, we built upon those and consolidated those priority areas. We merged community development and culture with economic development. So that we ended up having four priority areas. Going back to the previous matrix, if we could, I do want to summarize. The work that has been done on the goal areas, these goals, many of our goals, some of them are short-term goals, some of them are longer-term goals. So some have been completed, some we continue to work on, some will always be ongoing, just the nature of the work. For example, increased staffing, that was done, we did do that. We developed a spreadsheet to show the status of projects. Gain compliance with the housing element, we added an additional code enforcement officer, we are working on downtown. We have a number of irons in the fire on downtown and getting to the goal of making it a more. Dynamic business and walkable friendly downtown. So we are continuing to work on that, the research and SIM sales tax leakage, that is ongoing, we work with a consultant to do that. We have hired an economic development analyst, we continue to update policies, that is an ongoing item. We've done many large ones, are almost done with our personnel policies. We have funding now to do the zoning ordinance, which is a huge one, so we really have been tackling those. The, we have met with many developers and have put together ways that. Infrastructure for, for housing can, can happen, so we continue to work on that. Looking at improving streamlining procedures, just again, funding for example for the permit processing software, so. Addressing those, work through, brought in consultants, so we worked through the backlog on planning items and projects. The freeway exits are our welcome mats, we do continue to work on that, we recently have brought abatement projects forward. We've been working with Caltrans, as you know, to make sure that we get things cleaned up quickly in regard to that. So that our, the entryways to our city are, are, are looking better. Also maintaining property values, we work with code, we have more code enforcement and public safety, we're closely together to help with that. Then we, we also, again with hiring an economic development person can work on core programs. Now, a lot of that has been COVID related this past year, obviously. So then I think we're getting into a repetition of some of them, engaging, finding ways to engage our grassroots. We now have social media Facebook page for the city of Selma, that has been a great way to get information out to our community. We have a new website that is just about to be launched, so a lot of work has gone into that as ways that we can. Better engage our community and we were doing a lot of wonderful events with our partners. Obviously, that changed with COVID, but we look forward to the day where we can do more of them, right now our events really center around getting vaccines. And testing done and getting food and PPE, all those things out, so those are great ways that we have engaged. And as everybody mentioned, one of the things that has come out of this is different ways we've engaged our community through the pandemic. So that's the summary of the, the past goals and priority areas. And we provide that to you so that you have it, you can build upon it or you can change it, it's something that. Needs to be updated to reflect what you're hearing from your constituents. Of, of you all are as the city council.
Thank you, Teresa, I think once again, as you hear that overview, you, you see a community. That has come together even more than in the past, that through, through a downtime. What's, what the response has been is for the community come together, council come together, bringing the community in, in a number of ways. As you look at these four priorities and we, we heard what, what everyone's interest to us, what your ideals were for the community. They do fold into these areas, they're, they're, they can all be incorporated in this. In, into these four, one of these four areas, and so the question we have at the moment is, would the, is the council going to talk about this a little bit if you have questions? To retain those four priority areas and move forward as this is, this is sort of the overall. You know, if you will, goal theme areas, priority areas that you can use within to set strategies, to set your goals. And have your outcomes for the next year and beyond. So, Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll ask you to go ahead and lead a, a conversation in that. If this is an interest of the council in retaining these four priorities to move forward.
Good, council. Have input at this time on the four priority areas that we have previously had starting in two thousand and nineteen?
I'd like to make a comment. While three years ago, I did run on my platform was public safety. And I was very proud now to say that three years ago was horrible. And today we have, our public safety has increased in staff. And not only that, our crime has gone down, which is amazing. Our citizens are telling me this is, we feel safe. And they want to continue to, you know, be outdoors and doing what they can, but due to COVID, you know, right now they can't. But. The citizens are, they feel safe and that's the number one key. And we did increase staff. And that's a great thing too. So for me, I feel that. We have to keep public safety is number one goal because without public safety. We're not going to get developers that are going to want to come here and develop if we have a high crime rate. I mean, that was said before. So. Those are just my comments and I think it's very vital and important to keep public safety our number one goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I like to, I like to. Say a couple of words. First of all, from my understanding, this is a workshop in order for the future development of our community, correct? Not what we've been doing in accolades or what's going on with the future, what we've done last year.
Correct, council member. This is like building on what you've done in the past. You're absolutely right. Yeah.
So so my question first, I guess the question was if we want to keep the four priorities we had last year. And I seen that we condensed them and I see that, first of all, I did vote for public safety being number one on one of those last year. But the concern I have on the four that the question was, do we want to keep the four? As as we had last year in the call, the answer I have is, I want to know which, I think if I'm not, if I understand this correctly. Infrastructure is with economic development. Is that not correct or is it with?
Yes, economic and community development. Yes.
I think that. I think that public safety needs to be on its own platform. I think infrastructure needs to be on its own platform. And I'm 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 fine with whatever else to everyone else goes. That's just my own opinion. I I believe that. Safety is one of our, one of our most strongest ally, as you say, for our community, but at the same time. With no infrastructure, you have no development. With no development, you have no police officers. And what I want, what I, what I've been saying for the last since I've got onto council, we have to have the foresight. We have to believe in our future. We have to understand that we're not going to be getting the accolades of what we develop and. We 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 make, we have to make crucial decisions now that will adhere to the future development of our community. And I'm doing it, the only thing I want to say is in regards to these four, I would love to see infrastructure to be on its own.
Thank you, council member. And let me make a correction. I see what I did. That those four, those four priority areas were set in twenty nineteen and then there was added discussion. And in twenty twenty, that was collapsed to three, public safety, economic development and community development, and then community development and culture. So my apologies, it basically is three. And then I'm understanding you, council member, to say. Go from three back to four so that there's a specific area of infrastructure. Is that your suggestion?
Yeah, right now the conversation was because we want to put it before and my 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 input would be. For sure, public safety being number one. I voted for that. But I would, I would, economic development for sure is also one, but I would like to see if we can. Pinpoint and take out infrastructure and put that on its own.
Got it. That would, that would bring, that would bring it to four, just. Well, well, you know, we went from what from not twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, public safety was one standalone. Economic development and community development was a second standalone. And then community development and culture was discussed and those two were merged. As to as to one. So that would be community development and culture as a third. So you're suggesting infrastructure as a fourth, right?
Yeah, if I recall, the the reason why infrastructure was actually sliced and put back into is because they had very low voting on at our chair when we did vote. And I thought that I thought that maybe I'm I'm I've been misunderstanding Teresa, but I thought that you just put it under because. You had a certain amount of votes on that. So we moved it into another category, another another group, but I'd like to see if we could put it out on its own.
Certainly, we can, we can put it on its own. I just wanted to clarify that there were six priority areas at first. And now then it went to four, but we did merge some, we merged some of them. So, Dr. Ryle, I was just wanting to to share that this, if we added infrastructure as its own and pulled it out. That will make five. And I think that's on your spreadsheet. There's.
Okay, I was looking at that other priority sheet, Teresa. I'm sorry. Very good.
Problem. I just wanted to make sure we were all on the.
Got it. Thank you.
I don't know if we can pull up that sheet that has the four and then.
Yes, that would be good. See, I'm looking at that consolidated on May four, twenty twenty.
Yeah, yeah, this one.
Yeah. And this is good. It's good to clarify. Okay, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Perfect. Okay, that's the one. Thank you so much. I was looking at the wrong sheet. Let me capture that to put into the report.
And I see infrastructure's been added on there.
Great. Thank you. Perfect. All right, other comments.
Council members have any further comments?
Yes, so and and this might end up falling under the economic development part, but not just bringing businesses. You know, like retail, but I want more, well, I'm thinking, you know, more jobs, like creating more. Businesses where maybe, I don't know, call center, a, you know, we could just just explore the. Oh, she's muted. Councilmember Mendoza and I see you are muted. I don't know what I did. I must have hit this little mouse is very sensitive. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so you know, the 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 high skill, you know, type of jobs, you know, those those higher income levels. Like I said, that might fall under the community development or economic development. And of course, housing, you know, not just houses, but, you know, affordable housing. And I think it's some of the things. But definitely, you know, the public safety. The infrastructure and jobs.
That definitely, definitely the jobs fall under economic development for sure. When you talk about businesses. And then you have an, you add an added interest in in terms of higher skills or whatever that, yeah, that's a sort of a refinement under economic development. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Your potential.
Yes.
Um, basically, they say I agree with the intro, infrastructure. And is it under community economics development? Is that where we're, that's where you're putting it kind of?
That's where it was. It's it's been requested that we pull it out. So we.
Put it by itself then?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I, yes, I agree with that. That's a pretty major one also.
Great, good.
Great. And I'd like to reiterate the importance of public safety. It's, you know, we're, we we've been deficient in it in the past and it has. Kept businesses from coming to Selma. It's it's made people feel unsafe and we have made improvements. In that area and it's it's definitely helped. Crime is down. The number of patrols are up. And I get a lot of citizen feedback that people feel safer, not just for themselves, but sending their kids out. Economic development, right? I mean, you can't have, as. Councilmember Trahilo said, you can't fund public safety without economic development. That would include as a subset, infrastructure. I never recalled anyone being against infrastructure. In fact, the last year, we worked on a capital improvement plan, which details what we need to do in terms of infrastructure for the future. I know we've been going back and forth on sewer lines and dinuba. And for the big housing developments up there and you know, it's been, I think there has been a voice to just pay it and just put it in. As the city, but that would constitute a gift of public funds. Plus, if you put it in for the developers up there. And the economy has a downturn, they just go away while the citizens have to fund that. There's nothing for free. The citizens have to fund infrastructure many times. So it's important to examine our grants. Our our lobbyists, all the alternative funding sources in the businesses. And it's one reason it's so important in our park to make sure that. It's a park that collaborates with the business interests around because that can help with the development of the infrastructure that will have to go in. That park as well. Another topic I'd like to bring up. And that we need to add somewhere, I believe. And it's been, it goes back to one of the original questions of. You know, what we've seen because of COVID and that's homelessness. That is a huge issue and it's a huge issue. For our citizens and it's a huge issue for the folks who find themselves homeless. And that problem has been underscored by COVID because you know, the homeless have been able to get temporary housing. So by funded by the state, but it should be noted, the city gets no money, no funding for homelessness. And hopefully with this new ARP, hopefully the city will get some of that money and this council will be able to. Use some of that funding to remedy that situation. But I know the city of Fresno is working on it. And there are more and more people who are becoming displaced and that is going to impact our town. I think we have to make this a priority. I don't know what slot we put it under, what category. But let's remember in June, those families there and those individuals at the super eight. That contract runs out with the county and we definitely need to find a place. Or some of the homeless will find a place here and you're you'll, you're seeing them now going back to Caltrans and. All the Caltrans properties and our our chief in our city has done a great job. Working with Caltrans to remedy that, but it's not to just kick them out. It's to find a permanent solution for them. That is what we need to do with homelessness. And I think we need to make that. A priority and goal, a solution for the future. Just I'll I'll end where I started on public safety. It hit home Thursday at two AM. I get a call, your alarm went off. You had somebody try to break in your building. I had, we had somebody try to break into our building. I was down there in the middle of the night. There was someone in there trying to get in. Fortunately, the PD was there in a couple of minutes. I was there in five. And you know, they they couldn't get in because we had good cameras and we had good security. We always have to pay attention to public safety and make sure that that is that that top priority. So that our businesses and our individuals feel safe and feel enabled to work here and live here.
Thank you, Mayor. And you notice, if you'll notice the sheet that came up that asks about priorities. Homelessness, if you look across the board at all of those areas that you you are our goal areas. Fits into every one of those. Your infrastructure is critical, your public safety is critical, your the the housing, the development. Every community engagement, all of those are affected by homelessness. And so you may, you can set that as a priority, not necessarily putting it into any one of those priority goal and goal areas. But know that that's a top priority for your community, for the for the work that you're doing. And then you allocate resources accordingly. Particularly if you're looking to add resources that are available out there for for homelessness in any way. But that you allocate resources in such a way that they accrue to the work that addresses the issue of homelessness. But it does fall into every one of your your priority areas.
It does. It cuts across all lines, every single one of those categories. It it affects and is in a different way. And we're just in a situation where we don't quite know how this American Rescue Plan. What's going to come down, you know, how much funding we're going to get and how it can be, how it can be used. So we, you know, we can't really allocate it today, but maybe we can just make it a priority today.
Correct, correct. So it's it's there, it's on your plan, it is a top priority. And so that when when dollars do come in, that then you know where to allocate in your various goal areas. And if they don't, then you take your goal areas and you talk about if there are not external funds coming in, you look at your goal areas and you say. So what, how do we allocate what we have toward that priority area? Any other comments?
I suggested this time that we we make sure we have everybody's goal areas and we can proceed to voting and doing that. So that we do have an eleven o'clock kind of hard.
Okay.
Timeline.
So should we take a five minute break right now while we get the remainder of our questions in? And then when we reconvene, we can have our vote?
So go ahead and outline that process, Teresa.
Yeah, I think we just need to gather the last of the council member goals that and put. Many of you have already given them to us and we have them up here. And we'll add homelessness in there on under one of them, just for the voting purposes. If we need to regroup them, you know, move some things around after the fact. We'll we'll keep them all up there, but they may fit into other categories later. Since we've got infrastructure, maybe the park gets moved over to infrastructure. The new fire station gets moved over to infrastructure, but for the purposes of voting, I just want to make sure they're all there.
Got it. Great. So right now we'll take a five minute break while we get our last items in and then we'll reconvene at at ten forty five.
I think you have one comment, Mayor. Do you have a comment or a question?
Yes, I just want to make sure that I did have that housing, that type of housing in my goals. I just want, yeah, I just. It's under affordable supportive housing. It all, senior housing, it was all together.
Okay, thank God. And we got, we got that from you. Thank you.
We'll reconvene at ten forty five.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, everybody.
Great. Teresa, are you online?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, just checking in with you. So these have been coming in, they they came in in advance and during conversation, is that what's taking place?
Yes, indeed.
Wonderful.
Yeah, really, the the team did a great job.
And so then, great. So the summary is in that, in in that, in that last slate, the slide displayed?
I'm sorry, what was?
Is it, is kind of the overall summary reflected in that last slide that you displayed or is there another slide to come up with the summary?
They're working on the summary right now and they'll vote on that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And will they vote during the break or when they come back?
When they come back.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying, we're trying to add those last goals.
Great work.
And then, sorry, we do have an eleven o'clock, so.
But I think we're really in great shape.
Okay, I do too. I do.
I do. I mean, when you get back, then they'll they'll take that time to do that. And really, the summary is then what that they can see. And that's all we need for today. And then I could take this and and, you know, do the summary of the comments and so forth back to you. And then you could massage it all for what you get back to them.
Yes.
Do you feel like it's been covered the way you wanted it to?
I I think, I think we have got so much good information here. Yeah.
Great. Great, thank you. Perfect.
So what, what are your feelings?
Well, you guys got, I mean, this is, these are mine right here. Fire station, patrol, gang units, but shutters.
Shot or gang units? Okay.
Street signs, those are all in there. Okay.
Street signs I moved over to. Street signs I moved over to.
I gotta go look how your uh Nick Medina is up there.
Come see him for a minute. Come, come here, come here. There he is, there he is, there he is, there he is. There he is. Here he is. Yeah, let's see what time it is. Almost time to go back to work, yeah. So just go back in a bit with your babies and then when I'm to working, you and I'll do something together, okay? Let's go get your baby, your babies. Good boy, good boy, good boy.
Hilda, are you online? Hi. Hi, how's it going?
How are you? My gosh, you look wonderful. What?
Oh, thank you. My hair, I have not had a haircut for a year. I'll get one in two weeks now because I got my second vaccine, so it's way down here.
Oh, my gosh.
I've just been pulling it back. It's easy.
Well, Hilda, I'll tell you, I actually have one of the worst cuts I've ever had. It's sort of in the right shape, but my fourteen year old grandson did it for me, so it's like, okay, it's okay.
Yeah, I haven't had my hair this long in years.
Hilda, how are the kids?
They're all wonderful. They're all, I, I have uh eight grandchildren.
Hilda, really?
Yeah, all under ten years old.
I love it. Are they all in the area?
No, they're all in the Bay Area by Stan, over by Stanford in Portola Valley. Two of the families, they're neighbors, and then the other ones in San Francisco, and they're very close. So there's seven girls and one boy.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, how wonderful. Congratulations. See what these kids can do for us?
Pardon?
See what these kids can do for us?
I know, they're just, they're doing so well and they're just down to earth, just good people and all their spouses are wonderful.
I'm so glad.
So fortunate, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great. Well, it sure is a treat to see you. My gosh, blast from the past. I mean, we've done this before.
Yeah, I know.
I love the way this city works together. It's just wonderful. It's always a pleasure to be, Selma's kind of my home away from home, you know. I have a bead central there is uh, I used to actually have a studio in there and do some of my artwork. And they still hang my stuff and so when it opens up, that's my first place to go back.
Right, okay, grateful.
Yeah.
No, it's great to see you. I'm still remembering this, sitting next to you on the dais.
Well, this is a nice blast from the past. Now we're sitting almost next to each other in Zoom.
Yes, that's true.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So are you guys almost done or you're still finishing?
We are, we are. We're just about done. We've got about another, I mean, we've got a timeline at eleven and that's going to work out just right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, such a pleasure to work with folks that get things done. Yes.
Thank you, Jackie. This is Tracy and I just want to update you that we are going to send out a uh survey to the council afterwards. Um they have all provided their list of goals based on um those priorities and the ones that they've added, including infrastructure and the mention of homelessness. Um if there's anything missing from the complete list that I send out. Um they can let me know or you can let me know. Uh my email address is on that, one of the first slides there in this presentation.
We have our council, pardon me, so I'm sorry to interrupt Tracy. Do we have our last council member who's ready to come back?
Uh council member Trahilo, are you there? Perfect. Yep, we have all five, so we can reconvene now for my.
Okay.
Officially at ten forty-seven.
Okay, and given time considerations, we're going to need to change the program a little bit today. Um I'll put it back with our um city manager.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, so what we'll do is Tracy was explaining is send the survey out to you individually with a link. You can vote for your top priorities and that back to us. If we missed anything, uh please let us know. Um and uh, but we, we think we've got everything that you've given us here and appreciate all of the good feedback and. Dedicating the time to this important process so we can reflect your goals and priorities. In the upcoming budget, which also is basically our work plan for the year. So uh thank you, everybody, for all the participation and a special thank you to Raina and Tracy for putting together a great way to do this. Um in, in a, in a uh, what are we calling it? A hybrid mode of Zoom and in-person meetings, so uh. Very nicely done.
And then we will have these results compiled and we will go over it at the next council meeting in advance or how will we review the results?
We'll bring you back a report um so that you can affirm that.
Is an agenda item?
Reflected all your priorities, the staff of agenda item, yes.
Okay. All right, and that'll be at the next council meeting?
Um timing wise, let, let, if not the next one, the one after that.
Okay, all right. And I would also like to say thank you to staff for putting this together and Dr. Ryle for coming today. Um it has been very um educational and enlightening as these always are. It's always good to refresh. You know, the city and the council um on our, our goals and directions. Dr. Ryle, did you have any thing you wanted to, to move on with from here?
Only to say thank you very much and I also thank and applaud the staff for a process that pulls it all together. You have the information that you need. Thank you once again for allowing me to be a part of your process, mayor. And once again, let me just say compliments to your. Council for working together the way they do over many, many years. I saw councils that did and councils that not so much. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you. Thank you so very much. I appreciate.
Dr. Ryle, we really appreciate your coming and we look forward to seeing your art at the Arts Center when uh we get back to normal.
Thank you. All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, with that, we'll move into.
Close session.
Okay, for that, we will recess into closed session. And let me announce the closed session. It'll be a public employee, disciplined dismissal release pursuant to government code, section five four nine five seven.
As a reminder to everyone, but council who is online, um I will, will be closing the Zoom meeting. So that only the council members and our attorneys are online.
Uh city clerk, uh I know that uh Ms. Bennet was going to come online uh and that Mr. Welty has said he'd appear in person. Is he there?
Yes, he is here and so is our court reporter and I do see Shaleen just jumped on the Zoom. Thank you, Shaleen.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask our um court reporter, Mr. Welty, to come on in.
And there's still a screen, um a, something on the screen, uh city clerk?
Working on that right now.
Thank you.
The computer, stop the share. Um I'm also going to stop the Zoom uh live stream of be on YouTube. And I'm gonna ask our employee Shane, Public Works Director Shane, can you jump off? I don't have to kick you off.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I'm gonna close all the doors and I ask council to make sure that um your doors are closed as we go into closed session. In about a minute. Hi, Shaleen, I see you had your hand raised.
And I had made a request that um I'd be able to share my screen if possible.
Yes, thank you for reminding me that I am going to make you a co- a co-host for you to be able to do that. Perfect, you should be able to do that now.
So as soon, as soon as the mayor gets back and and um council member Gera, we can start, I assume?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.